The Sampson County Board of Commissioners for March 6th. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Appreciate you coming. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Lee.
Would you join me as we pray, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this perfectly beautiful day that you have given us. Dear God, we ask for traveling safeties for our colleague and our friend, Commissioner Lethal Lee, as she is in Raleigh, representing Sampson County. We ask for your guidance and your wisdom as we handle the matters of Sampson County. For these things, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen. Would you join me, rise and join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. All right, at this time, I need approval of the agenda. So do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for approval of the agenda.
Got a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, all right. All right, I open a public hearing. Ms. Shannon, go ahead and name another private road.
We have duly advertised a public hearing to receive comments on the recommended names of certain private roads. On behalf of the Road Naming Committee, we have received a recommendation on the naming of private road PVT 1834-609. The committee has met and recommends the name Landmark Drive.
Does any, is anyone here would like to speak to that? I've got a question. All right, if not, I close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we name the private road Landmark Drive as recommended.
Okay. Got a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous, all right, good deal. All right, open another public hearing for amendments to the fiscal year 2223 Economic Development Budget, Mr. Jordan.
Good evening, Chairman Kibbitt and Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of the Economic Development Commission tonight. Part of our Economic Development Board's mission is we go out on existing industry visits, and the result of one of those visits is this request tonight. When meeting with DuBois Steel in Roseboro, they make plate steel, structural steel, and jubiler steel, we learned that they were looking at doing some expanding and potential hiring based on the new upfitted property. And the EDC has reached out to the North Carolina Commerce Building Reuse Funds, and we were, they were awarded a grant of $120,000 that would pass through our budget. And so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Anyone have any questions? Does anyone here have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I move we approve the amendments to the Economic Development Budget as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, that's passed. All right, we'll go to item two on the agenda. And again, Mr. Jordan.
Yes, sir. Before you and your package, you'll have information regarding the industrial park here in Clinton, the Sampson Southeast Business Center. And as you recall, about three years ago, the Board of Commissioners approved purchase of 120-plus or minus acres within the industrial park. And since that time, we've received a grant, EDC received a grant for 1.28 million to put in a road and some sewer and water infrastructure. And that project is complete with the naming of the road you approved earlier tonight. So what we have in there is part of the, our effort is to request that you approve annexing the property into the city of Clinton. There's several things this will accomplish. One, it'll increase the fire rating on the property. It's hard to believe, but there's two fire ratings, one's inside, one's out. But that also will provide connectivity to the sewer system, to the city of Clinton for future prospects that come in. So we're requesting that you approve us to go to the city and request voluntary annexation into the city. Have no bearing on our taxes at this point.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? All right, sounds good, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the board chair to execute on behalf of Sampson County, petition for voluntary annexation.
Okay, got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous. All right, moving on to B, the legal side, Wave Two of opioid settlement, Ms. Starling.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, as you're aware through your involvement with the association, that this is something that the Association and North Carolina Department of Justice are very much pushing at this time. And that is primarily because there is an April 18th, 2023 deadline for us to sign on to this. Back in 2019, the Board declared the opioid epidemic a public nuisance in Sampson County and authorized outside counsel to file suit against a number of opioid distributors, manufacturers, national pharmacy chains. You're certainly not the only local government in North Carolina to do this. Many, many counties did, and many municipalities did. There was what is called a Wave One or First Wave Settlement that was reached, $26 billion over 18 years. That's with Janson, which is an affiliate of Johnson &amp; Johnson, McKesson, and some other large manufacturer, or distributors, rather. $750 million of that went to North Carolina. Sampson's County's share of that first wave of settlements, about $3.99 million over 18 years. There has now been a second Wave Two settlement reached with Walmart, Tava Pharmaceutical, Allergan, CVS, and Walgreens. This is a $21 billion settlement with more than $600 million to be paid to North Carolina. The projection of Sampson County, and this is a projection, but the projection of Sampson County's share of that is $3.19 million payable from 2023 to 2036. So in order for us to sign on to that, we need to do two things. Need to, well, one thing, we need to authorize the county manager to execute the resolution that begins on page 17 of your agenda materials, and that will authorize him to sign the settlement and to sign the allocation agreement that the state has put together that defines how the funds are allocated between the different counties and different municipalities that are eligible. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions on this? It's a, it's a major deal, this is nationwide, and of course, North Carolina got a larger settlement than a lot because all 100 counties were involved. We had 100% participation. And anyway, it's, it's over 18 years, but there are some, some areas got considerably more where there was high population, but it was all weighted out, and of course, we got what was really coming to us. All right, I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the execution of opioid settlement and approve of the supplemental agreement for additional funds between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid litigation. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, that's unanimous. And now I need another motion to authorize the county manager.
I move that we authorize the county manager to execute the supplemental agreement for additional funds from the additional settlements of opioid litigation and any other necessary documents.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
I've got a second, all in favor. Again, it's unanimous, that's good. Thank you, Ms. Starling. Let's see. Now, we're, Mr. Clark, you've got some information for us?
Yes, you were handed out earlier, a memo from the Adams Company, it should be your, should be the top one. It's for the ESF RLP program. On February 28th, bids were received at the administration office, bids were opened and read aloud. The bid tabulations for the bids we received are attached behind the memo. We are asking that the board award the unit 2010 Shirley Peacock to Thomas J. Holling. This award is contingent upon a change order to reduce the overall bid price to the budget. Also, we're requesting unit 20-13 Alice Boykin also be awarded to Thomas Holland with the same contingency. Unit 2014 Lily Kirby also awarded to Thomas Holland with the same contingency, all that all be, all the prices be negotiated to be within budget. The final unit, 2020 Esther Drawhorn, also be awarded to Thomas Holland. That one is contingent upon additional funding being awarded to Sampson County by the North Carolina Housing Finance Authority.
Okay. Any questions concerning this? All right, I'll accept the motion to award the reconstruction of these two homes as recommended by the Adams Company.
I make a motion that we receive this reward for restoring of these homes.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, that's unanimous. All right, Mr. Black, you're up again.
Your next memo from the Adams Company concerns the award of bids under the CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Program. We received bids this morning at 10:00 a.m., they were opened and read aloud. We had a bid tabulation, there were only two homes in this. The bid that we did, the unit we received bids from is unit 20-05 Suzie Cooper, 1424 Garland Airport Road in Garland. We received two bids, the lowest bid being Finesse Builders Incorporated at $164,960. The other home, we received no bids for. We'd also be requesting the board also be notifying that we will send this one out for a rebid at a later time. We are requesting the board award the bid of $164,962 Finesse Builders.
Okay. Any questions? Keep in mind, this is, this is all through grants, is that correct, Ms. Clark?
That is, there's no county dollars in this.
Right. All right, I move we award the bid for reconstruction as recommended by the Adams Company. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, we're unanimous with that, too. All right, we're down to E on item two of the Roseboro Water Main Extension Project. Ms. Ross and Ms. Turlington?
Good afternoon, Board. Yeah, we'll be talking about the Taskwater 4 Roseboro Bypass Water Main Project. That project was, bids were open on Thursday, March 2nd, at 2:00 at the Sampson County Public Works Office. Everything was read aloud, we had five bidders show up, so that was good news, more than we've had in recent bids. We have a little list, a table for you all to look through and review of those bids and where they came in at. Good news for this project was it came in under budget, lower than we expected. The number that we were actually going to go for is listed, are sort of emboldened on our Herring-Rybin-Bart's number, and that makes Herring-Rybin-Bart the low responsive, responsible bidder. Let's see, well, another note for this project, all these projects for the Roseboro Bypass are funded under the SCIF funds, and it's considered a system improvement-type project that I think Mr. Reynolds presented on earlier last year. So that'd be one of these projects. So I guess at this time, are there any questions regarding the bids that we received?
Anyone?
Okay.
I'm good with it.
Then I guess we'll recommend the board award a contract for the Roseboro Bypass to Herring-Rybin-Bart, the parent low responsible, responsible bidder, at a total contract price of $986,538.76.
Okay.
Will you include in that motion adoption of the resolution that's in your agenda?
Okay, all right. Your motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution awarding the bid to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, Herring-Rybin-Bart, and authorizing the county manager to execute a contract for the construction of the water main extensions for a total price of $984,538.76.
Second?
Second.
The one thing I want to point out again, this is all done in the enterprise system, there's no tax dollars, this is water, is that correct?
That's correct. That's a grant, too, though.
It's a grant, yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If we could pause, we have an interim director for Public Works, Mr. Mark Turlington, and I think everybody knows him, but I wanted to make sure that he was introduced. He's got a big workload right now. He's been with us eight or nine years, Mark?
Going on 10 years.
Going on 10 years, so, so we're continuing to operate.
That's great, we're certainly glad to have you. Ms. Starling, appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion, all in favor, raise your hand. That's passed. Again, all right, we're down to item three, which is Consent Agenda. Anyone got any questions on that? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, that's passed. All right, now we're at item four on the recommended consideration for the tax appeal. We normally offer one-half credit on the penalty, and I move that we consider reduction of that penalty for, for this, these tax appeals. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Again, that's passed. All right, now we're ready for the county manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, I will be very brief. The one thing I would like to remind everybody about is there are a lot of contracts and a lot of work going on in the county between the water system and some of this money that, that our legislators have helped direct toward us. I think, David, it's probably close to $30 million of work in various states, but some of it is water, some of it is infrastructure, so there's a lot of activity with that and a lot of good work going on by a lot of people. The second thing that I will mention is at the end of the meeting, I've been talking with, with the Extension Service, and they would like to resume years ago, or three years, up until about three years ago, I think, we were having an annual meeting over there, where we would go over an hour or two before our meeting. They would give us dinner and then give us a program, and with this being a large agricultural county, it is a pretty good tradition. So we have arranged that for the April meeting. So that meeting, at the end of it, we're going to ask you to recess to reconvene the April meeting to 4:00 at the Extension Service, and we will go over and have dinner and have a short program, and then we will be back here for your regular meeting at 6:00.
Okay.
And that's all I have, sir.
Ms. Shannon, we have, anyone sign up for the public comment? All right, would you give our policy, please?
In accordance with the North Carolina general statutes, a period of time is reserved for comments from the public on topics not included in our agenda today. Speakers will be called forward in the order that they registered, address the board from the lectern, and begin by stating their name and address. Each speaker is allotted three minutes for comments. The light on the lectern will turn yellow with one minute remaining, and will turn red and chime when the allotted time is up. We ask that when your time is up, you promptly conclude your comments and return to your seat. If time allows, those who failed to register prior to the meeting will be given the opportunity to speak, following those who registered in advance. The public comment section is intended to provide a forum for the board to listen to its citizens, and there should be no expectation that the board will answer questions raised during this time. A full copy of our policies and procedures is available at the registration table as well as on our website.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Hunt, you're signed up. If you would, please come forward, give us your name and address and...
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Elaine Hunt. My address is 7171 Old Warsaw Road, Turkey. First, I want to applaud you all for what you did for the people in Ivanhoe. I know you have a long ways to go on that project, but still, I thank God for what you've done thus far. And I know there's a proverb that say, "Out of sight, out of mind." And so I'm sure none of you all have thought about me and my coming since I came last, but our problem still exists. We still have rusty water, and we're still seeking help from you all regarding our rusty water on Old Warsaw Road in the facility of 7171 Old Warsaw Road. You have county water at a certain point, but where I stay alone with others, we do not have the county water. And we need county water. We can't drink our water like I'm sure you all can. And we're requesting that you all consider looking into the matter that we have bringing before you this evening and days gone past. I realize we don't have the number of houses that you stated we needed to have, but we can't help that, we don't have the houses. And there are exceptions made each and every day, and we're asking you all to consider making some exceptions when it comes to the requirement of the number of houses and to help us out, because we need help. We need quality water to drink like everybody else, and I think we deserve it. I know the policy you all have that I read was outdated and revisions. I ask that you look at your policy that was given to me by, I think, Mr. Reynolds, and just help, help the people on Old Warsaw Road out with our water. I thank you for your consideration in this matter, and I thank you for listening to me at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. We appreciate your comments. Next, we have Mr. Butler. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Mr. F. Butler. I live at 1265 Nathan Dudley Road, and my problem is the same as hers. I signed up for water whenever the project was first started. We've been living at Dudley Road since 1979, and we decided to sell some land. We got a contractor. He told us that once he built the houses, he was going to run water down. He come back and said he can't afford to and put wells down. And I have about six neighbors, their water's the same as mine's. So much iron in it, you can't drink it. And that's why we're here, to see what the county can do to help us. Like, he ran a temporary line, and it's only about 1,200 feet from where we are, but it's going to take at least 1,500 feet to cover everybody. And we just hope and pray that in a short time, we can have some county water. I have the list here with everybody's name on it and signed it, who wants it, who I turn it into, but this is all I have.
Thank, thank you, sir. If you would give that to Mr. Turlington, and we'll certainly look into your situation as well as Ms. Hunt's as well. Our goal is to get as much water to everybody that we can, as feasible and the money that we have to work with. This is, as we pointed out, this is on an enterprise system, which is not tax dollars, but our water system supports itself, is self-perpetuating, so we appreciate it. I understand, I'm on a well myself at my house. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, well, I think I'll take my turn. I've got some comments I want to make. As we begin March, we are now in the budget process. It is important for everyone to understand our strengths as well as concerns as we move forward. There are two positives that come to mind. First, we, we received a very positive audit that indicates our sound fiscal policy and a reasonable fund balance. However, the audit does not specifically address future cash flows. Second, the county has, has and is making investments in economic development. This may cause questions in the short term, however, the board has a responsibility to plan as much as possible for the long term while considering our many short-term needs. By state law, the county is required to develop, enact, and adhere to a budget every year. As we start our budget deliberations, we need to be mindful of our circumstances to ensure that our short-term decisions are consistent with both the short and long-term needs of the county. First, our tax rate is one of the highest in the state. Without question, we will need additional revenue, to the extent possible that we need to look for alternative ways to increase revenue without significantly affecting the tax rate. This thought assumes that we will minimize increases in operating expenses. Today, we're living in unprecedented times. COVID has changed our lives in more ways than we ever imagined. The medical side was extreme enough, but I fear that the economic impact is going to affect every aspect of our lives for many years to come. Inflation is at a 40-year high at a magnitude never seen in our lifetime. Our federal government concept of free spending and operating without a balanced budget is not a sound concept to govern. This is also not an option for local county governments by law. Last year, our projected tax base increased by approximately $10 million. This increase was not enough to sustain our increased cost of operations. This board reduced the recommended budget by approximately $2.5 million. Over $1 million was cut by deferring deposits into a variety of reserve accounts that are needed for the long-term maintenance of our facilities. We cannot defer these types of deposits on a regular basis. On the positive side, we have projected increases in sales tax over the last several years as the fed, as the amount of federal money is injected... Into the system, is, into the system declines, we're, we're concerned that we may not be able to project continued significant increases in sales tax. We're also concerned about inflation and other supply chain issues. On a monthly basis, our county expenditures on electricity, gas, and other utilities are concerning. Those costs are increasing for county government in the same manner that individual homeowners and businesses are facing. Like private business and residential homeowners, we have the same level of revenue shortages that must be resolved. Medicaid transformation is underway. It is also quite possible that our revenues for transportation will not increase significantly and quite possibly show some decline. Medicaid expansion is currently being considered by the North Carolina Legislature and will most likely pass. Even though the federal government is projected to cover the costs, we know from experience that eventually the state will have to share in the burden, which always trickles down in the end to the county. Our feasibility study predicts that our county will, will have considerable costs on top of our current annual budget of $6 million for this department alone. My fear is, is that the expense will require tax increases. Our employees are our most valuable resource. Much has been said about the financial challenges faced by our employees during the pandemic and during this period of high inflation. We're quite proud of what we have accomplished. In the last 18 months, all county employees have received approximately 15% increases in their salaries, 12.5% increase plus a 2.1% bonus, with detention officers receiving almost 20%, 17.5% plus a 2.5% bonus. At the same time, we recognize that many of our departments are facing significant vacancies. However, the available workforce is almost nonexistent. The shortage of employees is not unique to Sampson County, but is prevalent nationwide. Many of the vacancy challenges can be attributed to our inability to keep up with the market conditions for salaries. This is why the board has voted to complete the market study. The market study also demonstrates the board's commitment to all employees. There will be a cost associated with the implement, implementation of the market study. We are committed to meeting the needs, and it has always been considered a top priority. Contrary to the social media... contrary to the social media constant barrage of misinformation. We want to commend our county manager, Ed, Mr. Ed Causey, and staff for their tireless efforts in accommodating the wishes of the Board of Commissioners. In the six-plus years that I have served on the board, I've found the county management to be professional, open-minded, and receptive to any and all of our recommendations. Another misconception is that the county manager, that this is the county manager's budget. It is not. Again, this is not the county manager's budget. It is the budget that the board has scrutinized, adjusted, and approved after hours of deliberation. Everyone on this board is a product of Sampson County, of which we were all proud. We serve as commissioners not for financial gain, but to offer our services to the county in which we grew up and love. We believe the long-term future of Sampson County will be quite positive if we work together to accomplish these goals. It will behoove us all to move forward in a thoughtful and deliberate fashion.
I appreciate everyone coming. Thank you for taking the time. Is there any more business that anyone has? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
To recess to adjourn?
I move that we recess to reconvene at 4:00 p.m. on April 3rd, April 3rd.
4:00.
At 4:00.
At county extension.
At county extension.
All right, second. All in favor? All right.